Aloha, welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, 9:50 AM, Joint EET with CPA Hearing. First, we'll begin a housekeeping announcement in the likely event that we have abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. The committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14, 2023, in this room, 229, and a public notice will be posted. Please note, we are not taking any more testimony today, and today is just decision-making. Of course, in discussion about Senate Bill 1602, in light of the information that I've received on behalf of Attorney General's Office, I'm going to defer this bill indefinitely. And with that, this is adjourned. Oh, hang on. Yeah, it's adjourned. Thank you.
Good morning, and welcome to the Commerce and Consumer Protection Committee. We are here for two agendas. One is decision-making on prior legislative measures, and then we also have a regular agenda. Today is Thursday, February 9, 2023. We are in Room 229. And I would just like to note before we get started that in the event that we... Here we go. The meeting is being streamed as usual, live on YouTube, and in the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will try to reconvene and discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 14, at 9:50 AM, in this room 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For all members online and in the room, if this is your first time testifying before our committee, we have a two-minute testimony limit that we respectfully request that you abide by. The committee has been provided all of your written testimony. We have reviewed it, so if you would like to clarify or add any specifics to your testimony, feel free to do so. Otherwise, we'd encourage you to stand on your testimony and stick around because we might have questions as we proceed. Before we get going on the decision-making, I'm going to recess briefly. Recession. Okay, we're back on our 9:30 AM agenda. What we're going to do is roll the decision... We are going to defer the decision-making on our 9:30 AM agenda on Senate Bills 174, 158, and 1234 until end of calendar, and we will take up regular testimony on our 9:30 AM agenda. So first up, Senate Bill 393 relating to the landlord code. This measure extends the period for notice termination of the rental agreement from five business days to 15 calendar days until December 31st. It also requires landlords engaging in mediation, like filing an act for summary possession if a tenant schedules or attempts to schedule a mediation. Also requires landlords to include specific information in the 15 calendar day notice provided to tenants and makes an appropriation. First up, we have the Department of Human Services offering comments. Okay, the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support. That's all the registered testimony we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, since there's no one to ask questions of, we'll move on to the next measure, SB 54, relating to gasoline-powered leaf blowers. This measure prohibits the sale, offer for sale, or operation of gasoline-powered leaf blowers. First up, we have the Department of Health with their comments. Thank you very much. Before we move to the next testifier, IT, I'm hearing feedback on the mics. Is there someone unmuted on Zoom?
Care about the chair, let me just check.
Thank you. Okay, Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition. Attorney General's Office offering comment. Thank you. Department of Transportation in support. Okay, Ted Boland in support. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Ted Boland, testifying individually. As a former Deputy Attorney General, I also see a solid prevention problem concern that's been raised by Department of Health and the Attorney General. You can't regulate based on air pollution, but you can regulate based on noise, and I think you should because I think leaf blowers are a serious noise issue. You have my written testimony where I explained some of the problems that noise creates and how it is a pollution issue as well as the other things that you might think of as more traditional pollution. Just propose that you could perhaps, if it would help pass the bill, you might propose restricting it to the use of gasoline leaf blowers rather than the sale, and you might do it in the urban land district rather than statewide because I think it's this local, it's kind of a local issue for people who are near the leaf blower, and maybe that's not so applicable to other parts of the state. That's just a suggestion, but I would support the intent of the bill, and I would support it if you do it based on noise. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
We'll be over for questions.
Thank you, Ted. So before I read off the written testimony, that's all the registered in-person testimony we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Please. Morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Kevin Lai. I'm the former chairman of Downtown Chinatown Neighbor Board Number 13, but I'm coming to do today as an individual who lives in the Kukui Plaza Economy and Complex, one of the largest in the state, near the corner of New Guanu Avenue and Kukui Street in downtown area. I speak in favor of the resolution, the bill rather, but I am urging that there be some type of understanding of the issues at hand with the noise in this particular part of our area. Concerns exist about the enforcement of the rules. The 8:00 AM rule is flagrantly violated by many of the people in that area who will begin to use leaf blowers at 7:15 or earlier, and I think there's a tacit understanding that because the Department of Health Office of Noise and Baby Logic Branch, which monitors these types of violations for noise levels, doesn't come on duty until 8:00 AM, so to try to find someone in their office who's able to monitor and enforce the violations is difficult. That entails calling HPD, and often that's really not a priority of HPD to come by and try to assist. Nonetheless, the idea of trying to reduce the noise in these areas is something that would be welcomed by many residents in the area, but again, there are certain nuances of the current statutes which could stand to be improved. There are concerns about when someone is using a leaf blower in, for example, the parking lot of a particular establishment that's across the street from a large residential area. The 100-foot rule is difficult because the leaf blower could be at the perimeter of the property near the sidewalk, which is going to be less than 100 feet, but by the time an enforcement agent arrives, they may have been moved to the interior of their property, which should be net more than 100 feet away from the neighboring residential area. So because sound travels in all directions, it's really a problem, and I hope that we can find some way to adjust this. I'd be happy to be involved in any sort of a community involvement to help explain some of the actual on-the-ground, day-to-day incidences that you...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here or online that would like to testify on this measure, SB 54? Okay, seeing none, the following individuals submitted written testimony. The Outdoor Power Equipment Institute in opposition. Michael Rice offering comments. Thomas Graham. Kathy Gogel and Teo Mucknick in support. Lebrado Kobian, Andrew Crossland, Nancy de Vlantis, Robin Vanderpool, Charles Mapa, Vivek Mathella, Leslie Miles, and Kamakana De Dele, all in opposition. Karin Solomon in support. Susan De Dele in opposition. Mallory De Dele in opposition. Sean Steele and Joseph Dahlin in support. Members, any questions? Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Boland, if you could return. You know, I think you are probably familiar with a lot of the downtown and Waikiki noise issues.
Yes.
We have dealt with this leaf floor issue for a number of years, and you're correct on the enforcement side. Have you talked with Department of Health about possible ways that perhaps the prohibition could be tailored as a pilot project to determine what's the best way of providing a prohibition and enforcement that would be particularly applicable in high-density urban areas, which suffer different kinds of challenges than what you would expect to see, you know, in and around hotels, commercial, and other kinds of establishments?
Yeah, thank you for your question. As a Manoa resident, I am very concerned about this issue as well as for all the people in Waikiki and the other downtown areas that reference. I have not spoken, in direct answer to your question, I have not spoken at the Department of Health, and I think they would certainly be willing to answer any questions you might have on that, but their enforcement is a problem, and so having a statute that makes it illegal to use at least provides a vehicle for the law enforcement officials, especially if they had monitors to do so. But I'm not particularly an expert in the enforcement side of it, so maybe Department of Health can do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps Department of Health, if you could, I guess, respond on, you know, some of the enforcement kinds of issues. I'm sort of very familiar with the specific location that one of the prior testifiers mentioned, and you know, we kind of grappled back and forth with enforcement for a number of years, so I'm not surprised that Senator Rhodes introduced this measure.
Yes, and we are welcome to conversations about how we can tailor any of our regulations, any changes that we may need to make. Currently, there is that 100-foot rule, so you are allowed to use a leaf blower outside of 100 feet between... Well, actually, you're allowed to use it between 8:00 and 6:00, Monday to Friday, and 9:00 and 6:00 on Sundays and holidays. Sorry, holiday. But if you're using a leaf blower at 101 feet away at 8:00 AM or before 8:00 AM, it's not a violation, so there is...
Has the department considered modifying the time constraints? Because usually, most of the complaints that, you know, I have seen are either for early morning or late afternoon, you know, where it kind of intrudes into people's, you know, sleeping requirements.
We're willing to have conversations about that.
Okay, well, okay, thank you.
Members, any other questions? Senator McKelvey.
Do you like... Well, don't want to fall down in chair again. So you're saying there's a state law, the books right now, for time and distance of leaf blowers?
Yes, 342F has a leaf floor section where you're not able to use a leaf blower within 100 feet of a residential zone before the hours of 8:00 AM.
Do you know, I mean, maybe you don't keep data on this, but has this ever been actually enforced by a county police department or the county?
Not that I know of.
So it's pretty much a dead letter law, then?
I guess you could say that, but I did look at our databases. So between 2019 and 2022, we've had, 2019, we had 10 complaints for leaf blowers, 2020, we had 10, 2021, 13, 2022, 17. So it's, the numbers aren't really high, but of course, it is an issue, and it is something that we would like to protect our public from.
Do you break it down by geographic source of the complaints, like how many came from Honolulu, Oahu, how many came from...
I could do that, but I'd have to look at our database.
I mean, so when you get a complaint, I mean, do you dispatch a DOA hearing? I mean, a person?
Our response, since we don't have the immediate response capability, we take in the complaint and we contact the owner of the property, so we don't immediately send out one of our inspectors, and I guess that's where it's referred to the police if they need that immediate response capability.
Could a county enact stricter ordinances that would come in more in line with the keeping of the bill? You know, to Senator Fukunaga's point, I mean, could the county council in Oahu enact stricter ordinances? Because now you have a county ordinance, there's a better chance of enforcement occurring instead of a state law.
I guess that's possible, but that may be a better question for somebody on the city side.
Okay, so go ahead, sorry.
I have a follow-up quickly. So the current practice is to notify the owner of the property that a complaint has been filed by some of the member of the public regarding the noise. That seems like in a lot of cases, it would most likely exacerbate the situation.
Usually, they're cooperative, and they either talk to their contractor, and they'll adjust the times that they use the leaf floors, and most times, it helps. But yeah, as far as us going out there and getting any kind of violations, it hasn't happened.
So these are, these are most often urban area complaints where you're responding and reaching out to management companies or large building operators?
It's sometimes golf courses, sometimes it's condos, shopping centers.
Yeah. Thank you. Vice Chair?
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next measure on the agenda, SB 935 relating to gambling. This prohibits advertisements for Nevada hotels, resorts, or other recreational services that promote casinos or gambling devices licensed by the Nevada Gaming Commission from being generally advertised in the state of Hawaii. It also imposes a tax. First up, we have the Department of Taxation with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. My name is Brian Davidson. I'm here with, on behalf of the Department of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Attorney General's Office offering comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. You have our written testimony, of course. With this bill, we are noting a concern with the entire Section 2 of the bill, which is the prohibition on advertising, generally, you know, restrictions on commercial speech, which advertising is, are going to be problematic, especially where the advertising is truthful and the activity is lawful, and here, it's with respect to, you know, gambling in Nevada. We note that even if you take out the restriction, or take out the specific geographic area of Nevada, you still have a problem with the bill. It's still a restriction on commercial speech, and you know, there's a, there's a related concern that the prohibition doesn't necessarily solve the ills or issues that are raised in this Section 1 of the bill, so we are recommending that the section be deleted. I'll be around if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Tax Foundation offering comments.
Good morning.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation. We do note that the bill has two pieces, one which regulates the advertising, and the second part that imposes a punitive 30% G E T. We think there are constitutional issues with both pieces. The first part is the regulation of commercial speech, which the Attorney General has talked to you about. The second part, we think there are commerce clause issues, and we have discussed that briefly. And some of the, one of the, some of the cases in that area that may want to be analyzed for this is the Tennessee Wine and Spirits case from 2019, and of course, our own Baca imports versus Diaz from 1984. If we have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Vacations Hawaii in opposition. Okay, Mr. Rachel in support. Good morning.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Rachel. I was born and raised in Hawaii, and I'm concerned with gambling legislation in my home state. I work as a researcher at a center dedicated to gambling studies at Rutgers University. I stand by my written testimony, and I'm here to clarify any questions. Yeah, the spirit of the bill, from what I can see, is to spark a broader conversation and really just kind of address, just because gambling is illegal doesn't mean we don't have an obligation to take care of people who suffer from the ills that come from gambling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have. For individuals who indicated they would be at the hearing, is there anyone else online or in the room who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to note the written testimony submitted by the following individuals. BA McClintock in opposition. Lebrado Kobian in opposition. Victor Ramos in support. And Will Karen in support. Members, questions? I have a question for Mr. Cho. Ray, are you online?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your testimony. You noted that there are 24,000 individual residents in the state of Hawaii who suffer from gambling addiction. Where was that stat from?
That's from the National Council on Problem Gambling. That's where, that's the kind of national body for, that represents problem gambling, so.
And so, are you... Do you know how they determine that number?
I do not. I'm happy to get back to you on their exact methodology, but I would also note that they perform regular studies across the country. In a Civil Beat article last year, they noted that they started getting calls for help from Hawaii because there's no local resources in terms of getting specific gambling addiction help in Hawaii.
And so, I'm wondering whether the study references some, some direct connection between the individuals suffering from gambling addiction in the state of Hawaii as it relates to travel outside of the state versus illicit activity in the state?
I don't know if the study went that far, but I think you're highlighting another important point, which, you know, the presence of illegal gambling rooms, which the committee should be aware of, you know. That's just been a constant game of cat and mouse, and currently, law enforcement doesn't have a lot of preventative measures, so whether that gambling is happening out of state or in-state, you know, I think the bill, although it talks about out-of-state, I think that's just a very natural place to point to because of the Naiton Island that everyone's familiar with. It certainly doesn't single out. I think that the main focus is making sure that, you know, the state is providing adequate resources for, for ills that come from gambling, whether it's legal in our state or not.
But there's no data to indicate. Where? How?
Yeah, I would say in general, that's, there's, I'd have to get back to you on their methodologies, but we need to do a better job of even taking the temperature. I mean, the Department of Health said it has no data on gambling addiction in Hawaii, so, you know, I can't imagine the NCPG would have any specialized knowledge of how best to perform a sort of a prevalent study of gambling, and is that gambling addiction a result of what's going on in Nevada? I do know that these vacation operators, you know, they, you know, part of the package is to, you know, to lower the fares and lower that entry to get people over to casinos. I also defend, you know, casinos are, you know, well-regulated industries, and there's a lot of things to do other than gambling, absolutely, but I just want to note that there's, there's an imbalance here of, you know, once out-of-state operators getting a benefit potentially, and we're dealing with a lot of the problems that could potentially happen. This isn't a generalization of all gamblers, absolutely not, but for those that it does affect, you know, with the current economic constraints that Hawaii faces, I think it should be noted.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Senator McKelvey.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Well, there's, you know, there's gambling more than just in Las Vegas. You have Reno, you have gambling outside of Los Angeles, you have gambling by the, some of the tribes in Washington State, the Lummi Nation, you have gambling in Vancouver, you have them on ships. So do you think if that's truly what this is trying to address, we should just ban all travel-related advertisements, period, from all of these other different places that have gambling opportunities as well across the board, and tax every destination? Package that's going to every place in the country that has gambling, because gambling occurs more than just Las Vegas?
Absolutely. I think gambling, Nevada is just an easy place for starting to make this case. I wish I had more data, but I think this dialogue, we need to reach out and to all affected stakeholders. And gambling is exploding nationwide. There's 44 states with legal casino gaming, generating an estimated $41 billion in tax revenue. So yeah, Nevada is hardly the only one, and then when you factor in online gaming, which is also a growing multi-billion-dollar industry, and then we got the Super Bowl coming up, and you know, that is also increasing, so the exposure is everywhere. So really, what I'm doing here is trying to make this case that the world is changing, and gambling is just becoming more and more prevalent across the United States. We're not talking about legalization here, and words like "ban" versus "regulate", we need to work those details out, but correct, it is absolutely not about just Nevada here.
Well, I think my point also brings up now equal protection violations of the Constitution in addition to the interstate and other objections, constitutional issues that were raised earlier. But thank you. I appreciate you staying on and with feedback. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure on the agenda, which is SB 945 relating to special-purpose digital currency licensure. This measure establishes a program for the licensure, regulation, and oversight of digital currency companies. First up, we have the White Technology Development Corporation in support. Morning, Len.
Morning. Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Len Higashi. We stand on our testimony in support of this bill. Thank you, Chair, for introducing and hearing this bill. We, I'll say, we're not advocates for crypto investing. I think that's a misperception, but we are advocates for the utility uses, and through the past few years, we've had the opportunity, opportunity to see some of this in the state, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Decency A Division of Financial Institutions in support. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha, Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Iris Ikeda. I'm the Commissioner for the Division of Financial Institutions, and thank you for allowing us to testify via Zoom. So we are supportive of this bill, and we are requesting some amendments to the bill. Just kind of, you know, going through the bill, we noticed that some of the, some of the changes that we had previously asked for unfortunately did not get in. You know, as you know, digital currency has grown in popularity and acceptance in the state and, you know, nationwide and, of course, globally, but there's little regulation in this industry. We did launch our Digital Currency Innovation Lab that Mr. Higashi just talked about, and through that, we, that was the catalyst for this new licensing scheme that we worked out with the digital currency industry. So as you know, the recent failures of a few digital currency companies just have illustrated the volatility of these units and how quickly companies can fail and how consumers are left with nothing at their failure. So some of the main points of this particular bill is that it provides licensing requirements consistent with our other industries. It provides minimum regulatory policies like anti-money laundering and cybersecurity and privacy to protect consumers. And thirdly, it requires companies to maintain a strong financial standing and holding purposeful investments, which are the liquid investments to cover the units held. And so, the Department... the department supports this measure and I am available to answering questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have oh, that's all the registered testimony we have for the hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, we have written comments submitted by the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. We also have Ryan Kawailani Ozawa in support and Alika Connie in support. Members, any questions? Okay, we'll move to the next measure, SB ten twenty-seven relating to combat sports. This measure establishes a state combat sports sports commission and provides for regulation of combat sports. First, we have Walter Carvalho in support. Good morning.
Vice Chair and Committee. Walt Carvalho Junior here from the Big Island, Hawaii. Here to speak on combat sports. I've been in the industry for more than forty years, almost fifty and twenty-seven years here in Hawaii. And so I've seen a lot of things come and go, seen a lot of kids come up the line and make it and a lot of them fall through the cracks and I I stand on the testimony that I admit it, but I would love to debate with the DCCA on this. But the 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 reason why I'm here talking about this is because in the twenty-seven years that I've been here in Hawaii, I've seen a lot of things fall through the cracks. And I've been also on the professional boxing has a commission here and I'm licensed through the Professional Boxing Commission as well, twenty-one other states and around the country and the world. I work at all the big mixed martial arts events and I don't see why we can't get the big ones to come here and support Hawaii fighters. There's a lot of kids here that have made it all the way to the top and never have been able to perform in front of their own families and proud here in Hawaii. So I'm not here to try to take over what the DCCA has established because I was here also when Jerry Chang initially initial that bill. I mean, when he initially proposed that bill, I was here and I met with him prior to this this whole setup here to go over what we would like to make small corrections on and all we're asking for is to have a commission. One, right now the DCCA has a committee. There's one kid that runs the program, who's Alan Tonic, which should be retired. He appointed a new kid to take his place. He's trying his best. He's doing a great job. James is doing a great job and he just can't keep up with it. You know, in the state of California, there's on a commission, there's six to eight people. There's ten inspectors. It's a big, you cannot run a show, an MMA show with one guy and one or two inspectors that are untrained. They're.
Thank you very much. We've reached the two minutes, but if there are questions, then I'm.
Oh, please.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have the DCCA in opposition.
Eric Vice Chair. Members of the committee, I'm Nideen Ondo, Director of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We stand on our written testimony in opposition to this measure and I'm available for any questioning.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the last measure on this agenda, SB thirteen twenty-four relating to insurance. This amends various provisions of the insurance code. Yeah, I think that's the best way to describe it. So first up, we have the American Council of Life Insurers in support.
Good morning.
Morning Chair Vice Chair Senator McCalvi and Senator Richards. My name is Lauren Chikamoto. I'm the South American Council of Life Insurers. The bill in question here, what it does is it amends the insurance unfair and deceptive trade practices. And it does so by making lawful certain added value products and services that insurers provide. So in the bill, what it does is it carves out certain things that insurers do in connection with the sale of the insurance product. Those that are listed in the bill include many of those that the PNC characters allow. The bill unfortunately omits many of the things that life insurers do. And I outlined those in my testimony. There are basically three areas. The first is the omission of making the enhancement by a life insurer of financial wellness through items such as education and financial planning services. As you know, life insurers, the products that they sell include those that protect families and individuals and frailties, many of the frailties of life, which include disability, sickness and accidents and of course death. And in the process of selling that, what we do is we put into perspective the situations of individuals as they go through life and they have to deal with these things, disability and so forth. But we provide products.
Thank you, Mr. Chikamoto. If you could make yourself available for questions, we appreciate it. Thank you. And next we have the DCCA offering testimony and support. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Vice Chair Members of the Committee. My name is Ian Robertson for the Insurance Division. You have our written testimony, but I just wanted to highlight that we are requesting amendments by removing sections one and three of this bill. And I also wanted to note that on page forty-six, line eleven, the section that starts over there in this bill is labeled as section ten, but it looks like it should be section eleven because the prior section is also section ten. And I just wanted to point out that on page four of our testimony, where we are referring to section eleven, we actually are intending intending to refer to that second section ten that was apparently mislabeled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the NAIFA Hawaii in support. Good morning.
Morning Chair, morning Vice Chair, Members Cynthia Takinaka on behalf of National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. To further go on what Mr. Chikamoto was talking about. This is all from the NAIC Model Act that was in effect in this couple of years ago in two thousand and one. And it's under the rebating section and rebates in in insurance is really there so that the producer's commission is not shared with the policyholder. You know, you, we, we want to maintain consumer protection. But these what we're talking about are the exclusions. And so there's a whole list of exclusions. I don't know. Maybe there's like twenty in the model act. And there's two that was missing in the Insurance Commissioners Bill. And that has to do with enhancing financial wellness, such as education or financial planning. And two, assisting in the admin of the employee or retiree benefits. This is what my members do. You have to do fact binding to find out the policyholders' financial status. You just can't recommend any willy nilly product. Everybody is different. What you have going on in your family, what you have going on financially is very different. And so it's a matter of one-on-one presentations, workplace presentations. So we're not clear as to why these two provisions were excluded. And these were the only two excluded from the whole list. And this is what my members do. So, you know, is the employer the better person to educate the employees on these kinds of financial products? And that's why they have people, my my members, helping them help the employees, guide them through these roadblocks. So we really encourage you to stick back these two from NAIC model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Hawaii captive insurance council in support. Okay, that's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Senator McKelvey.
Is DCCA still on the line? There we are. Okay, well.
I'm here. My video is blocked by IT.
Okay, I I feel your pain. Anyway, you heard the testimony from Mr. Chikamoto and others that you know, this is a model, this is this admin bill, which I kind of found it ironic. You want to delete sections of your own bill, but that being said, that you know, the reference to A nine E doesn't debates from the model law and that we should be making amendments that they've suggested to bring it into model law by reinstating those two amended pieces they talked about. What would be your position insofar as their amendments, suggested amendments go?
Right now, we don't have a prepared position on that, but we are willing to discuss these matters with with the stakeholders. I believe we already have a meeting scheduled with the ACLI. And I would just refer back to page three of our testimony, the the intent of these amendments is to ensure consistency with national standards and benefit the local population where non-insurance benefit can mitigate health or safety risk.
Yeah, but they deviate from national standards, which is kind of what the point is by the admissions of the admin bill. Well, I'm glad you're talking to him. I appreciate you taking their concerns and their observations to heart because I think their points are well made. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, can can you please follow up on Senator McKelvey's second part of his question, which is why the DCCA is requesting deletions of sections of a measure that came through the governor's package?
As to sections one and three, the need for that position that's addressed by those two sections was was reassessed and a determination was made that we didn't need to pursue that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision making. Okay, thank you very much, very much. We are going to move into decision making on the two Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-three, nine thirty AM agendas in room two two nine. Again, this is the Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. We'll move to the decision making agenda first, SB one seventy-four relating to equitable gender representation on corporate boards. I would love to continue to have this discussion. The technical aspects necessary to keep this legislation moving are actually pretty complicated, so we're going to defer this measure and try and work on it over the interim. The next measure, SB one fifty-eight relating to deceptive trade practices. The recommendation is to move this measure out with a defective effective date of July one, twenty fifty. We are also going to amend references to commodity in the bill to read as the terms consumer commodity or consumer package. And we will adopt the definitions for those terms that currently exist in section four eighty-six dash one of the code. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair SB one fifty-eight passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
With reservation.
With reservations, so noted. Senator Allah.
Aye.
New measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure, SB one two three four. We are going to keep trying to work on the language in this measure. So I'm going to defer decision making on this measure until Thursday, February sixteenth at nine thirty-five AM in room two two nine. Well, now I move to our regular nine thirty hearing agenda for decision making on a number of bills we just took testimony on. The first is SB three ninety-three relating to the landlord tenant code. Recommendation on this measure is to pass it out with a defective effective date of July first, twenty fifty. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Allah.
No.
Okay, thank you. Measures adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure, SB fifty-four relating to gasoline powered leaf blowers. We did receive a lot of testimony on this issue and had pretty good discussion on it. I am going to recommend that we move this measure out with a defective effective date of July one, twenty fifty and accept the amendments from Mr. Ted Boland that are proposed in the testimony, which essentially amends the measure to prohibit the use of gas powered leaf blowers as opposed to the sale, offer for sale or operation, which are problematic constitutional or which are problematic legally. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair passing with amendments, SB fifty-four. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator. I'm sorry, Senator McKelvey.
A W R.
Okay, Senator Richards.
With reservation.
Yes, Senator Allah.
No.
Okay, thank you. Measures adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure, SB nine thirty-five related to gambling. The recommendation here is to move this measure out with the following amendments. We're going to accept the Attorney General's recommendations and delete section two so that deletes all specific references to commercial advertising and to the state of Nevada. We also have some technical non substantive amendments. We will defect the effective date and finally, we will create a new section in the measure which directs the tax revenue collected proposed in the bill into a special fund housed in the Department of Human Services for data collection and treatment of gambling addiction for Hawaii residents. We will also blank the tax percentage amount that is proposed in the measure. Members, any comments or questions? Okay. Did I mention the defective date?
Yes, you did.
Defective date as well. Okay. Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, SB nine thirty-five passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Allah.
No.
Okay, thank you. Measures adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB nine forty-five relating to special purpose digital currency licensure. The recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments. There are technical non substantive amendments. We will also adopt the amendments that I believe are provided to the members and located in the testimony from the Division of Financial Institutions and from the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. We will also defect the effective date of this measure to July first, twenty fifty. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, Vice Chair, SB nine forty-five passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Allah.
No.
Thank you. Measures adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB ten twenty-seven relating to combat sports. I would like to note the and thank the members of the public for their testimony. Note the opposition of the DCCA. I would hate for this measure to go down in the first round, so I'd like to recommend that we keep it moving. The last discussion we had on this was fifteen years ago and I believe we've had three, at least three MMA world champions from Hawaii during that period and no world title fights. So I'd like to keep this measure moving. We have some technical non substantive amendments. We will add language clarifying the composition of the commission and the terms of the members. And we will note in the committee report that if the bill passes, the DCCA may need time to stand up the commission. We'll also defect the effective date of this measure to July one, twenty fifty. Members, any comments or questions?
Chair, you can put your observations you just made in the committee report as to the title fighting champions.
So noted. Well, we'll get the specific number of champions we've had then. Yeah. Yeah, could suggest one. Thank you. Okay, Vice Chair, SB ten twenty-seven passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Allah.
No.
Okay, thank you. Measures adopted.
Thank you very much. Last measure on the agenda, SB thirteen twenty-four relating to insurance. The recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments. We will accept the DCCA request to remove sections one and three from the bill. We will also accept the proposed amendments of the ACLI, which I believe encompass other suggested amendments by other industry associations. There are also some technical non substantive amendments and will defect the effective. non-substantive amendments, and we'll defect the effective date of this measure to July one, twenty fifty. Members, comments or questions? Thank you. Okay. Uh, Vice Chair, S P thirteen twenty-four, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Alaw.
Aye.
Thank you. Measures adopted.
Uh, thank you very much. We are adjourned.